Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for being with us. Call this meeting to order. Councilmember Lanning, can you verify the way before?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're just joining us, there's a sign sheet on the back. We'd love to know who's with us this evening. And at this time, for indication, Pastor Chad Allen, sir, he'll come forward.
What about favorite books in the Bible? It's Proverbs. And Proverbs 24:6 says that kings wage war with many advisors, and victory is found in the counsel of the lives. So that's going to be my prayer for you. That you have the right tools, advisors, the things that you need to make the best decision for the city. So I pray. Thank you. God, we love you, and we're so grateful to be a part of this city, this great town. It is a privilege to be here. I love the people in it, all the businesses here, the churches, and those who are involved in every part of what makes this city so great. God, I pray that as these men and women govern this town, that you would give them the wisdom and insight to make the very best decisions for the people and citizens that live here. God, I pray that you would give them joy in their work and as they decide very important decisions that happen for this town. God, I pray that their conversation would be productive tonight. I pray that you would invoke wisdom in how they speak to each other and the things that they speak about. And I pray that they would glorify you ultimately. God, we love you and we thank you for what you're going to do here in this meeting and what happens outside this meeting. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, sir. So if that's what you mean, please, please, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, you have an agenda before you that was previously extended to you. I do have board amendments to make to the agenda that asked for. That is new business item number five. The verbiage on that item, as described, is incorrect. The amendment would be that that is consideration of an alcohol license for Papa's Pizza House with Mary at Barge's present. So it was just the text amendment on that. That is the only amendment I go before.
I think I motion that we accept the agenda with the change.
I have a motion, but say.
Say.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so, thank you. Madam City Clerk, the public comment section, do we have anyone on the side?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to the next item on our agenda, I have the public hearings. I'll hereby open the public hearings. Item number one is requested by African Will Cobb on behalf of Gateway Crossing Jasper LLC. Is the applicant here? There you are. Sir, would you like to come forward and speak on behalf of this item? Sorry, I lost you there, ma'am. I thought I saw you there last time.
I've been around a little. Good evening. My name is Will Cobb. Professional address is 434 Green Street, Gainesville, Georgia. So been before the council, I guess, on several occasions about signage, some of the national tenants and whatnot. So back again for, are we talking about both or just one?
On this item, I have approximately 0.94 acres on C2 General Commercial located 11 James Drive, various City of Jasper sign ordinance, increase the number of allowed building facades, signage from two to three for its whole range drive-through restaurant.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, so that's on that first allot, outlot, outlot one there. And so Chipotle's assets to come down and modify their signage or whatnot, modify if they get what they normally have, you know, standard buildings. And so that's what we've asked for on that. So we appreciate, you know, favorable vote, I think, from the planning and zoning board, and also voting for this as well. So I appreciate that. I'm here if you want to ask any questions.
Thanks, sir. Council, any questions up here? Next, I have staff with their presentation. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the first item that we have before you is a request by Will Cobb for additional signage for the Chipotle restaurant within the Gateway Crossing Shopping Center development. The applicant is requesting to increase the allowed number of facades and signage from two to three. So as far as the site overview goes, it's approximately nine tenths of an acre. It's located on the south side of the Gateway Crossing development. This is on the west side of that development's Camp Road entry. It has frontage on Camp Road as well as James Drive and Virginia Way, which are internal access drives. And this is the site of the future Chipotle drive-through restaurant. So to get more of the site context from the ground, to the north, we have the future Chicken salad chick and tropical smoothie building. To the east, across Virginia Way, we have a vacant property zone C2. To the south is a portion of the Quick Trip site. And to the west is the future location of Chick-fil-A. So again, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow for a greater number of signs than is currently permitted for a single apartment building. So right now, they only allow for two signs or two facades with signage, and the applicant is proposing three signs or three facades with signage. As far as the sign plan goes, they will have a sign facing south towards Camp Road, a sign facing west towards Chick-fil-A, and a sign facing north towards the internal building for the Chick-fil-A and tropical smoothie. They will not have any signage on the east side of the building. However, Chipotle will have tenant panels on the existing monument sign that is there along Camp Road. So again, when we evaluate a sign variance request, we look through our hardship situations that are clearly defined in our ordinance. The first hardship situation is that proximity of existing signs on adjoining lots causes the property to be ineligible due to spacing requirements for the type of sign facade. Staff believes that this is not met as there are no spacing requirements for wall signs. The second hardship situation is that such conditions are not the result of any actions of the property owner. Again, staff believes that this is not met as the proposed tenant or Chipotle is attempting to utilize more signs that are allowed by our code. The third hardship is that the variance relief is limited to the minimum relief necessary to overcome the hardship. Again, since there are no spacing requirements for wall signs and the hardship is imposed by the property owner, staff believes that this is not met. And the fourth criteria is that in no case shall the variance be granted to allow for a greater number of signs than would be allowed if the hardship did not exist. And staff, here again, believes that this is not met as this request to increase from two signs to three signs is in direct conflict with that provision. So with that, staff recommends denial of the variance due to failure to comply with all the established hardship criteria. However, the planning commission did recommend unanimous approval of the variance. They are meeting on April 22nd, subject to the condition, which is that the total sign area for the building shall not exceed 200 square feet. Currently, they're at about 119 square feet, so they comfortably fall under that 200 square foot limit. So with that, I do have any answering questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Council, any questions of staff? My only question for staff, they are under the 200 square foot limit, and so far variances that have been approved have all fallen below the 200 square foot limit. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Thank you, ma'am. No questions for staff? I'll move on for the public. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak on this item? Going once, going twice? None from the public. Item number two, request by African Will Cobb on behalf of Gateway Crossing Jasper LLC. This is in reference to the Whataburger drive-through restaurant. The applicant is with us. Mr. Cobb, welcome back, sir.
Thank you for having me. The same thing, one thing I would like to point out is, you know, all these tenants, they've been with me since the very beginning. You know, so the whole site was designed around these users. So, you know, with that Chipotle, Whataburger, and Walmart, and, you know, frankly, with, you know, my lease, you know, you're going to have to put that into public cities because they don't really like Walmart that much partying. Well, that's why we did more partying, so people wouldn't be taking up their partying. So the point of that is, is it would be a hardship if some of these tenants didn't get the variances that are requested because they've been here since day one. And so, and that would be, I guess, hardship from the owner, because you may or may not get your lease signed with, for example, Whataburger. So here we are to talk about Whataburger. So here we are asking that they have four signs, and we got into a little bit of some questionable maybe items with staff, because the way they count signage, one of them is like a star, a triangle that's behind a W. Well, so if you count that from across the bottom, the way you calculate it is as a square. So it ends up being a 10 by 10, which then pushes us over the limit, you know? And I think that the planning and zoning hearing goes, well, can't you just go back and ask to do a smaller sign or to get a smaller W? You know, a lot of these kind of companies, I mean, it's, they're not a bunch of free thinkers, let's say that. So that'd be a totally redesign, you know, from lighting and whatnot. So they will have money to sign out front, too, but that was all planned in overall master development, which is kind of how I've looked at it, is really, you know, I haven't gone out and bought like an individual lot on a road here or a lot there. You know, I'm in control of the whole center, so everything's thought out that way. But I would appreciate a favorable variance request by the commission as the planning and zoning staff or non-staff made it as well, so I'm going to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Council, any questions up here?
Do you know how many jobs Whataburger would be bringing? How many jobs potentially Whataburger will bring?
I think they're going to have probably around 50 employees that are going to be here. You know, Chick-fil-A, which was surprising to me, they're about 100. You know, some of that's seasonal, you know, some of that's high school kids and things like that, too. But, yes, these are all good employers. Yes, sir.
Mr. Cobb, do you know about the previous item on the agenda for Chipotle on employment? How many positions?
They're a little smaller. I couldn't, I couldn't say really, but I think they're about 30. I mean, really, it's really surprising, you know, how many people, everybody, employees, really.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's move on. Item number two to staff, good evening again.
Good evening. So these are sign variance requests related to the Whataburger and the Gateway Shopping Crossing, Gateway Crossing Shopping Center. The Whataburger pad is on the northwest corner of this site, adjacent to Highway 515. Whataburger is requesting three variances this evening. The first is to increase the allowed sign area from 200 square feet to 235 square feet. The second is to increase the allowed number of signs per building facade from one to two on two of the four facades. And then the third is to increase the allowed number of building facades with signage from two to four. So as far as the site context goes, it's approximately two and a half acres and C2 General Commercial, like the rest of the center. It does have approximately 388 feet of frontage on Highway 515, and this is the proposed Whataburger drive-through restaurant. So as far as the site context goes, to the north, we have property zone C2 for De Chevrolet. To the east is vacant land and a portion of the, you know, Publix Pharmacy. To the south is C2, and that is the site of the future Walmart. And to the west, across Highway 515, is the U-Haul sales storage facility. So again, Whataburger is requesting three variances. You can see along the interstate on your left how the signage will fit across the respective building facades. The applicant has cited hardships related to the high speed of traffic along Highway 515, limited visibility from intervening development, as well as Whataburger's corporate branding requirements. So in total, the requested variances will increase the allowed number of signs on this building from two to three. I also did want to highlight, Mr. Cobb mentioned where we have that unique sort of triangle feature, which are the mounting plates for the Whataburger logo that's there over the entry. This does increase the sign area, and this is the reason that they do get over that 200 square foot threshold. So this is their sign plan. You can see how the sign is distributed across the building. The east building facade will have a W with the triangle feature above the entry, as well as a script logo. The south facade will have a script logo. The west side facing Highway 515 will have a Whataburger logo and a script logo. And the north facade facing towards De Chevrolet will have a, just a Whataburger logo. So as far as our sign variance criteria goes, that first criteria is not met, as again, that's the criteria that talks about that the property is ineligible due to spacing requirements. All of this is wall signage and do not have any spacing requirements for wall signage. The second hardship criteria is that such conditions are not the result of actions of the property owner. Here again, we believe that this is not met as this is a corporate branding, you know, preference for Whataburger that they would like to carry through. The third condition is that the variances are limited to the minimum relief necessary to overcome the hardship. Since they're not technically a hardship, because there's no spacing requirement and it is self-composed by the property owner, we staff believes that this condition is not met. And then the fourth condition is that in no case shall variance be granted to allow for a greater number of signs. As a reminder, we're going from two signs to six signs. So again, this request is in direct conflict with that provision. So with that, staff recommends denial of the variance requests due to failure to comply with our hardship criteria and our sign code. However, the planning commission did recommend approval of all of the three requests, subject to the condition that the total sign area shall not exceed 235 square feet, as requested by the applicant.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, any questions for staff? All right, move on to the public. Anyone in the public here would like to speak on this item? Going once, going twice? All right, thank you. We will move on to item number three. It looks like you have items number three and four listed at the same time. Would you like to tell them both at the same time?
I hope I wasn't being too presumptuous, is to take them both at the same time, unless I know how much you guys enjoy listening to me speak.
Mr. Saif, are you comfortable with that, sir?
I'm comfortable with it.
All right. Item number three is request by African Christopher Stansl on behalf of Pickens County Government, the Development Authority of Pickens County. The owner's approximately 148.59 acres, located 193 Pickens Airport Road, parcel 041064 to annex the entire Pickens County Airport, including all airport parcels as more specifically described in the application into the City of Jasper. City of Jasper is also processing a concurrent request by African Christopher Stansl on behalf of Pickens County Government to rezone the property from Pickens County Highway Business District to City of Jasper M1 General Industry District upon annexation. Item number four handled at the same time as three is a request by African Christopher Stansl on behalf of Pickens County Government and the Development Authority of Pickens County, the owner of approximately 148.59 acres, located 193 Pickens Airport Road, parcel 041064, to rezone the entire Pickens County Airport, including all airport parcels by the City of Jasper, from Pickens County Highway Business District to City of Jasper M1 General Industry District. Is the applicant present? All right, I believe you had another meeting that was going to tie him up, so we did speak to the applicant. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mayor Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. As the mayor so eloquently stated, we are here to annex and rezone the Pickens County Airport into the City of Jasper. So site overview, so that big long purple swath, that would be the airport, is currently 140.59 acres, is currently zoned highway business for the county, but they are requesting an M1 designation for the final rezoning. There are utilities in the area with city water and sewer, caveat there, currently used as the Pickens County Airport, has frontage along Upper Salem, Camp Road, and Salem Church Road. So as a little site context, to the north, it's currently being used as a GDOT maintenance office and is located, is, sorry, is zoned highway business. To the east, we have Amacola EMC. To the south, we have Piedmont Village. And to the west, we have the other areas in the airport itself. So the request, current Chairman Stansl, they are requesting to seek the city services as the new airport FPO is constructed and to assist with the correction of past zoning changes that predate all of us leaving an island of city property on the northern side of the airport property. So again, we're going to annex that 140.59 into the city. As you know, the city's policy for water and sewer is to be located within the city. And again, this is to rezone from highway business, which is a county designation into the city, M1, which is general industry and a city zoning district. Pickens County will continue to own and operate the airport. So again, as you currently see on our zoning map, one thing that we do try and prevent is what you see right there, which is what we refer to as a donut hole, where there are surrounding parcels that are in the city but are separated by a large swath of land that is in the county. So this is to rectify a path at the airport. Again, the future development map, we always look towards our comprehensive plan for guidance when we're rezoning and annexing into the city. As you can see, this is part of our arterial road over there with 515, so this use would be compatible. It is, it will be continued to be used and developed the property for airport and airport-like uses. So recommendation, again, if, if the council found this matter and wishes to make the separate motions, we are recommending approval of the annexation and the rezoning with our condition of regarding water and sewer availability.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, any questions of staff? Are you none? Move to the public. Is there anyone in the public here that would like to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
What's the advantage of moving?
Just can you handle who you're, your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. My name's Penny Dykes. I, you need to know where I live. 279 Grand Circle in Jasper. What is the advantage to, where we don't have the water, to moving it into the city from the county? And would it produce more tax revenue or is, what, I guess, what's the advantage?
Sure. Christopher, should you like to speak on that while we're still making?
I certainly can. So the advantage for them is, as I stated before, the policy of the city is if you want sewer, water, sewer, city utilities, it is to be located within the city's jurisdiction. As Chairman Stansl had indicated, this is one of the reasons. So they do not have sewer out there right now, and so they can't build the terminal without sewer.
And they can't get it from the county?
The county does not operate sewer.
Oh, I know that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mary, aren't they already on the city water, the airport?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're already on city water.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item? Going once, going twice? That is item three and four. Know the business under public hearings, nothing further from staff. Counsel, any questions? I'll close the public hearings. Next item on the agenda, you have appointments. There are two appointments listed, counsel. I have a letter from Angela Coralino, the Executive Director for the Sequoia Regional Library System. It is dated April 24th of this year. Dear Mayor Radfield and City Council, the Board of Trustees of the Pickens County Public Library, sincerely appreciate the interest, support, and cooperation that you have given to the library during the past year. Thank you for your service of Caitlin Radfield to the Library Board. She has served admirably on the Pickens Board. Her term ends June 30th of 2025, and the Library Board would like to recommend her for a reappointment to a second term, beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2029. Thank you for the service of Kristy Hobgood to the Pickens Library Board. She has served admirably on the Pickens Board. Her partial term ends June 30th, 2025, and Library Board would like to recommend her for a reappointment to a full term, beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2029. Counsel, both of these, I will ask for a motion on. The first being my lovely wife for this volunteer unpaid position. She is an educator by trade, as is Ms. Hobgood, which is why Mayor Lawrence and I discussed them a few years ago for appointment. At this time, I will ask for a motion on the first appointment of Caitlin Radfield to the Library Board.
Make a motion, we reappoint Caitlin Radfield to the Library Board.
Say that motion, ma'am.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you. Second appointment is for Kristy Hobgood for the same Board, the Library Board, volunteer unpaid position, yield the floor for a motion to.
Make a motion that we approve Kristy Hobgood to the Board of, to the Library.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a motion, ma'am, a second.
Say that, sir. Please, stand up.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Proclamations. We have two this month. I'm really excited to hear that. The 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 4th through May 10th. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels, whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, I, Kirk Radfield, the mayor for the City of Jasper, Georgia, do hereby recognize the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Jasper, and further, we extend appreciation to our city clerk, Ms. Lauren Waters, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and the dedication to the communities they represent, dated the 5th of May, 2025. Thank you, ma'am. We are so thankful to have you onboard our team. Appreciate it. One of our focal. The second proclamation is for National Public Works Week, May 18th through May 24th, 2025. People, Purpose, and Presence is the theme this year, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and that help the high quality of life and well-being of all people of the City of Jasper. Therefore, I, Kirk Radfield, mayor, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join the representatives of the American Public Works Association in government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Mr. Davis? Therefore, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Jasper, dated today. Kirk Radfield. Mr. Davis, thank you and your crew for all of your work. We will celebrate you accordingly during your week. Counsel, next on your agenda, I have a consent agenda with three items, yield the floor.
Make a motion, consent agenda be approved.
Have a motion, ma'am, a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, for approval. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Moving on to new business item number one, consideration of special interest request from Bicycle Ride Across Georgia, also known as BRAG. Ms. Kim Golden, welcome to the meeting, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. BRAG is back, so some of you may be familiar, BRAG was here in 2018. That is the Bicycle Ride Across Georgia. They will be starting on May the 31st in Rome and working their way across the state of Georgia, ending in Hartwell on, I believe, it is June 7th. Amy, you're going to have to help me. How many riders do we think?
The most recent number that I've received is about 1,200.
So 1,200 riders will be traveling across the state of Georgia, along with the BRAG folks who provide all the support, bring the showers, very important sorts of things like that, carry the luggage, so that they are not having to cycle with luggage on their backs, and coming through our community. So they are going to be staying, or they have requested to stay, in Lee Newton Park. It is a good stop from where they will be starting in Cartersville, coming here before they go on to Dawsonville the next day. And so that will be on Monday, June the 2nd. They will be setting up in Lee Newton Park for their overnight stay, and during their time here in Jasper, there will be a shuttle system available that the Chamber has been working with some of our community organizations to make sure that the riders can get around to various locations within the city, taking them downtown, taking them over to the Walmart area, over to the Kroger area with some restaurants as well, and then kind of making that continual loop around the city. I do have Amy Myers. I do have Amy Myers and Addie Garner here this evening from the Pickens County Chamber of Commerce who have been working very closely to have this organized and to make sure that visitors to our community are enjoying their stay here. So any questions that you may have, they are here and available to answer.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions of staff and/or the wonderful representatives in our town? Thank y'all for being with us. Hearing none? I'll yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that we consider the special event ride coming to Jasper, Georgia.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Be in discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Item number two, consideration of special event request from the Optimists Club, Flapjack 5K Miss Call.
Yes, so the very popular run and then eat flapjacks, courtesy of the Optimists Club, is also back. This is their 27th annual run. As many of us know, the Optimists Club puts on lots of different events. Everything that they do is for the youth of our community, and so these fundraising events and things that they put on help with the programs like the Star Banquet and with the other things that they do throughout the year. So this fun event starts at 8:00 in the morning. It will be on Saturday, June the 21st. Runners will start kind of in the D.B. Carroll area, so there will be a brief closure on North Main Street, north of Church, which is State Road 53. The police department will hold traffic briefly for everyone to pass through the intersection, and then they'll get that operating just as quickly as possible. And they run all the way down to Little Avenue, and then turn around and come back up and end in front of the 61 Main, Honeysuckle, Red Bean area. And that's where they do their prizes, have the pancakes, flapjacks, excuse me, and have a lot of fun. So Parish Lowry with the Optimists Club is here this evening, if anyone has any questions about that, so we would ask approval of this event.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Parish or staff? Yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the Flapjack Run for Saturday, June 24th.
Second motion.
Second.
Second. Be in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Item number three, consideration of special event request from Lions Club, 4th of July.
Yes, so it hardly seems possible that it is almost July, but we will turn around and it will be here before you know it. And with that comes the Jasper Lions Club's annual tradition of the fair, the festival down in Lee Newton Park, and the parade on the 4th of July culminating in fireworks that evening. They are going to be setting up, is it June the 30th? Probably with the fair opening on the 1st.
The fair opens, I think, the 2nd.
Okay.
But they, they will be here probably the 1st of that week, coming from wherever they've been the weekend before, and then begin their setup so that they can open on the 2nd.
Excellent. And then the 6th will be the last day, and then they will be packing up and then heading to their next destination. And as you know, there is the parade on 4th of July down Main Street. It ends with the celebrations all day in Lee Newton Park, and then the fair opens, and then we have the fireworks in the evening. So our public safety teams work extremely close with the ride vendor when they are getting everything set up. I anticipate that that will not be a change this year either. They will work with them. The parade on the 4th starts at 11:00. We will have some road closures of Main Street, our traditional parade route, and we have already received the Lions Club insurance information. So Leslie Miller, who has helped to move some answers already, with the Lions Club is here this evening, if anyone has any questions for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions for staff or?
I will have, I do have one thing to add. We are in the process of adding some, a band to play on the 3rd and again on the 5th, so that there would be some more traffic in the park for the rides. So without, again, that's just begun to be in the works, so we are considering adding, adding a couple of things like that, just some more music the day before and after the 4th. But otherwise, the entertainment will start right after the parade, the conclusion of the parade, and will go until the fireworks.
Awesome. Thank you, ma'am. We certainly appreciate your hard work on this every single year.
Sure thing. And we would appreciate anybody who wants to come out and help police the parade, if anybody's willing to come do that, just to add a few extra helping hands that day.
I think Parish has the same stance.
Leslie, what year, how long has, have you still?
With few exceptions, such as during World War II and again during COVID in 2020, this event's been going on since 1939. The club was chartered on June 22nd of 39, and they held their first 4th of July celebration that, that 4th of July. So it's moved from Main Street over to the park that's near, what's now the Duck Pond over there by Chaihuge Tech, to now down at Lee Newton Park, so. And if we don't own our own rides anymore, thankfully, when we were grow, when I was growing up, my mother forbade me to ride those rides because she knew the men who put them together. So we don't, we do contract with P.C. rides now, but.
But now you don't know the men putting them together.
I don't, but I'm gonna tell you, I still do. So I won't hold for that, but my mother did forbade me, and I did sneak and ride, ride some one time, and then I understood what she meant. So, so it's still, it's still a fun day, and so we just want to make it a fun, safe event for everyone, and we appreciate any help that we can get with some extra hands at the parade especially, so.
Yes, ma'am. And to that note, I believe our fire chief can back and agree, our public safety team, Fire Marshal's Office do assist in setting up and making sure things are set, so you are good to go. Counsel, any questions for the advocate or staff? Hearing no questions, I'll yield the floor for a motion.
Motion to approve Jasper Lions Club 2025 4th of July special event.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Item number four, consideration of special event request for Zombie Fest.
Yes, and this is probably my favorite one to bring before y'all, because zombies, everybody loves zombies. But Zombie Fest is back. Prestige Medical Group here in Jasper is the creator of this event. They are bringing their extremely popular Zombie Fest event back on Saturday, October the 25th, so right before Halloween. This is a completely free, extremely family-oriented community event that has trick-or-treating in the park, contests, games, food, and just all kinds of fun for our community. Our public safety teams do typically participate in this event. I know I've gotten frank calls from Chief Sheriff before that he's run out of candy and he has to go to Walmart and pick up some more, so I, I know the volume of, of kids that are coming to this. This event utilizes every bit of the park, so with the farmer's market in the morning, they'll, they'll kind of isolate off that area, but then once they get packed up on the afternoon and move out, they will take over that lot as well. Let's see here. So I've got Kim O'Brien, I've got Dr. Yadda, I see in the bag, that are here this evening from Prestige Medical. If anyone has any questions for them or for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions for the advocate and/or staff? Thank y'all for hosting this wonderful event.
Yes, thank you.
Hearing no questions of the advocate or staff, I'll yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the special event for the Zombie Fest, October 25th.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, sir.
Motion and a second. Be in discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Moving on, item number five, new business, consideration of alcohol license for Papa's Pizza House. Ms. Burgess, welcome.
Good evening. This is a request by Giorgio's Papa Petru and Tim Papa's on behalf of Papa's Pizza, located at 408 East Church Street. They are looking for the ability to sell beer in line. As you know, there are requirements for distance away from schools and churches. They have provided the surveyor's letter saying that this is outside of those distances. They have also passed the background check, and there is no resident requirement due to the non-selling of liquor. So as they have met all of our qualifications, and have been signed off by police, we are asking for approval of the liquor license for, again, sorry, the alcohol license for Papa's Pizza.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the app can is, is here.
Oh, fantastic. Excuse me. Counsel, heard from staff, any questions of the advocate and/or staff? Hearing no questions of the advocate or staff, yield the floor for a motion.
Motion is to be approved.
Motion's have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Be in discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you. Congratulations, sir. Item number six, consideration of request for various city of Jasper sign ordinance to increase the allowed number of building fascades from 2 to 3 for Chipotle drive-through. Ms. Burgess? And/or Ellen?
Hi, you're a council. So as a reminder, this is a request to increase the allowed number of building facades with signage from 2 to 3 for Chipotle, Chipotle for at the Gateway Crossing Shopping Center. Staff did recommend denial of this request. However, if the council finds merit in the application, planning commission has recommended approval, subject to the condition that the sign area for the overall building shall not exceed 200 square feet.
Anything further from staff?
Yes, sir.
Any further? As I asked earlier, this stays under the 200 square foot threshold as all other variants have up to this point?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Counsel, I'll yield the floor for a motion.
Motion is to be approved.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Be in discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Item number seven, consideration of requests for various city of Jasper sign ordinance. Ms. Bell?
I say this item consists of three separate variant requests for the Whataburger at the Gateway Crossing Shopping Center. The first variant request is to increase the allowed sign area from 200 square feet to 235 square feet. The second variant request is to increase the allowed number of signs per building facade from 1 to 2 on 2 of the 4 building facades. And the final request is to increase the total number of facades with signage from 2 to 4, and all of the requests will result in an increase from 2 signs to 6 signs. So that staff is recommending denial due to failure to comply with our hardship criteria. However, the planning commission did recommend approval of all 3 of the requests, subject to the condition that the overall wall sign area for the building shall not exceed 235 square feet as requested by the applicant.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Sutton, on this one, I'm gonna ask your opinion. Would you prefer three separate motions for these variants, or would you prefer one?
I'm always in favor of letting things allow, so I'd do it at this point.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir. Counsel, there are three separate requests in this one variant, 200 to 235 square foot, 1 to 2 on 2 sides of the building, and 2 to 4 sides with signs. Yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve increase allowed sign, sign per building, and building facades.
I have a motion for approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Be in discussion, counsel? All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I want us to vote on the, each of these.
So on the increase in square footage, that vote was 2 to 3, and then the remaining 2 requests were unanimous, 5 and 0.
And how did you arrive at the 235 versus 200 for all the other?
So for the 235, as Mr. Cobb indicated, there is a unique sign on the building above one of the entries that has, yes, sir, to have that travel feature.
Any further discussion, counsel? Hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Item number eight, consideration request by Christopher Stansfield. This was for the annexation parcel 041064. Ms. Burgess, go ahead.
Again, this is for the annexation of the Pickens County Airport, approximately 140.59 acres into the city of Jasper, to close that donut hole and provide needed utilities for the new hangar. I'm sorry, terminal.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, all 140.59 acres, parcel 041064, any airport parcels. Yield the floor for a motion.
So.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Be in discussion, counsel?
So the, the motion that we're currently discussing is exactly what?
Annexation of the 140.59 acres at 193 Pickens Airport Road.
Just the annexation?
Yes, sir.
Not the zoning?
Correct. You're right.
Number 8.
You're correct.
So the description has the zoning in it, so is that an issue if we pass the motion?
He didn't.
No, sorry. So in there, it's just calling out that we also have the concurrent request below.
Okay.
Correct. Rezone is not included. Annex only. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Item number nine, consideration request by Christopher Stansfield of Pickens County. This is for the rezone for the entire Pickens County Airport, 140.59 acres, 193 Airport, Pickens Airport Road, parcel 041064.
Yes, this, again, this is the rezoning that goes along with the annexation. This is for it to be rezoned to M1, which allows for airport and airport terminal uses.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, it is for the rezoning of that entire parcel. Yield the floor for a motion. So, motion do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Be in discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So the conditions that we agreed upon, which were not being able to guarantee water and sewer, and one, they're already on water, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the, and the condition on the sewer, I guess, is to, because we've not made a decision on the lift station, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other question I have is the M1 zoning, can that, can we put conditions on that zoning?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
You can impose reasonable zoning conditions anytime you originally, originally zoned a piece of property or when you rezoned it. My concern is that I believe M1 includes adult entertainment. And I would like to, if we may, if we can amend the.
Motion.
Motion to, to make that a condition that they could not do adult entertainment. Is that right, Mayor? Do you remember?
So it, it is an allowed use, however, this airport is surrounded by residential uses currently, but you know, in the future, the residential uses may go away, but if you're within 500 feet of a residential use, you cannot have adult entertainment.
I was thinking, wasn't it industrial rather than M1?
M1 is industrial.
This is industrial.
This is totally industrial.
Ms. Nigga, your motion was to approve the rezone.
Correct.
Would that motion be amended to include the exclusion of adult entertainment?
Sure.
Is that allowable?
You can exclude uses in doing a rezone.
Reprovision.
Fantastic. For the record, let the motion show that that excludes the use of adult entertainment in that district for this specific use.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Item number 10, consideration of the purchase of a PropoT 57 excavator. Mr. Davis, double port tractor, come forth, please, sir. Welcome to the meeting.
Yes, ma'am. This excavator was actually benefited both public works and facilities. It is a best company that is new. As you know, that we've got some older equipment, so.
Mr. Davis, this is a budgeted item, is that correct?
It is.
Thank you, sir.
Question.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Davis? Hearing no questions, uh, yield the floor for a motion on this item.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Say it.
Motion and second, any discussion counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you counsel. I'm going forward, ma'am. Item number 11, consideration of the purchase of room attachment for component, skid steer.
This also will, um, help both, uh, public works utilities. It can actually help fire as well, um, I believe, uh, speed over something like that, it can be, it can be used.
We take it on his budget as well. He's like, wait a minute, wait a minute.
We can go and put a computer in there.
But I haven't, but I haven't left.
Mr. Davis, was this also a budgeted item?
It was.
Thank you sir. Uh, pre-budgeted item, counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that purchase of, uh, room attachments for the component be approved.
Motion and second?
Say it.
Any discussion?
Does this go on the tractor that we just approved or the skid steer?
It goes on the skid steer.
How wide is it?
Hey, do you want me to just?
Any further discussion counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you counsel.
Thank you, George.
There you go. Thank you.
Item number 12.
We appreciate public works and utilities, we're glad somebody decided our port was asking for it.
It's never him.
Item number 12, consideration of airport lift station, Mr. Douglas, welcome sir.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, you may recall in our last meeting, uh, there were a few additional documents that we need to be receipt of. We did receive those, feelings back, legal had reviewed, all is in proper order. Uh, you move forward, you're in consideration, counsel, may have the acceptance of the decision.
Thank you sir. Appreciate that. All the documents that were needed have been reviewed by legal and we are in good shape counsel. At this time, I'll yield the floor for a motion on accepting the airport lift station.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with accepting the lift station, sorry.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Say it.
Thank you counsel, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you counsel. We will have a recusal on item number 13, consideration of Georgia power easement. Councilmember Foulce will be recused from that item. Mr. Douglas.
Yes sir, and matter of fact, um, you may have seen some correspondence from me, um, last week. We had put this on, uh, hoping that we would be able to connect with the personnel, uh, to kind of get some better insight, to be able to, uh, share with you all. Unfortunately, we weren't able to connect, uh, so at this point, I don't have a whole lot to provide, so I'd like to ask you all to consider putting off till next month, maybe have a better feel for, um, any applications. Make sure that you don't complete overlap with GI, easements, et cetera.
Thank you sir. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion to table.
So moved.
I have a motion to table, do I have a second?
Say it.
Any discussion counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. One recusal for the record, please ma'am. Item number 14, consideration of personnel handbook, Mr. Douglas.
Yes sir, thank you, and, uh, so for the benefit of counsel, um, I would like to commend, um, glory for her efforts and the entire team, uh, our eight department leaders, uh, Stacy for her diligent work, um, councilmember Williams, Snaby, uh, don't know if they have anything that they'd like to specifically bring up, but this was, um, I guess began last year, kind of hit a pause as we kind of had some new personnel change and just kind of wanted to get this on. We had touched on it at the March 27th work session to then distribute it out to the council. Again, this is just a handbook, a guide, a reference point for management, department leaders, um, to provide guidance to our, our team. It's about 100 pages, about 16 chapters, uh, it's a very robust document that is comprehensive enough, I think, to address, um, all the, the changes that have gone on, um, and it pretty much modernizes the way we do business. This one is something that Ms. Waters is completely familiar with, um, I've read through it, and as I've communicated to some of you all, uh, even though there's components in here that may be specific to me, ultimately, in the human resources perspective, from onboarding team members, to the benefits, to the disciplinary, uh, it is something that I think, um, Ms. Waters confident in. And if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to muddy through them, but committee may have some, some things and on Ms. Waters. Legal, legal did a, a pretty decent job in reviewing it. Mr. Siphon enjoys thoroughly getting into the, the weeds of personnel handbooks, um, but he's been a, a great help. Thank you Lord. So, uh, Mr. Siphon, we're good?
We're good. Nothing more exciting than reading the personnel.
Right. I know, zoning ordinances, zoning ordinances are moving.
Anything from the committee on this personnel handbook?
I got a quick thing that we've had two members that's not had the chance to completely review it. I'd like for us, I think we've really worked hard on it, I agree, and, but I would like for them to have the opportunity if we could table that to our workshop or something, if that's
Sure.
Okay.
I'll yield the floor for a motion.
A motion we, uh, that was a motion, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was, I think hers was a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll wait for the second.
Motion and a second to table this item?
The board has done an astronomical job on it, and I think they're gonna see that when they go through the last revision of it.
Did I try to read it in bad noise? What a glass one.
It's bound to be, counsel, shoot.
Yeah, but that's a plan particularly.
Any further discussion, the council? All in favor on table?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you counsel. Committee report updates, development of local infrastructure.
We've done a split deals, very good and productive meeting. I think the, the two key things, other than, um, well, there's several things actually. The comp plan, we're various moving forward, uh, assembling the steering committee for, uh, Jasper comprehensive plan, um, and that's a very exciting development, something that we have been working on, uh, as a group, the council has, since, uh, 2019, when Mr. Douglas first showed up. That was the first mention of something for this scope of development, so that's very exciting. I think there's a little bit of misinformation being, uh, spread around about our sign, the commitment to our signs. We are in the process of running, uh, our sign ordinances through committee. There's been no decision about any, uh, updates or how those will, will be amended, although I feel, feel pretty certain that there will be some changes, uh, that that process was, uh, delineated with specifics and recommendations from council, uh, from committee, uh, last week, and so, um, that was good as well. Let's see what else. Those are the, those are the two things that come to mind, so.
Just, Mr. Counsel?
Both of them very exciting, uh, developments.
Thank you sir. Signs and admin?
Thank you for the vote on, uh, picking the, uh, decision on the, uh, staff manual. A tremendous amount of time put on that thing. Continue to thank, uh, our staff for the work that's been done on that. In your package, you've got a financial report, uh, it's not quite as boring as a, uh, uh, personnel manual, but it will put you to sleep if you let it, so, uh, any questions on that, suggestions, discussion? Uh, punished correctly.
Yeah, from the Lindsay, yeah. Lindsay?
That's all.
Good job.
Enterprise?
I just wanted to figure out, uh, is in the process of being evaluated and coming online. I anticipate we'll have a ribbon cutting in the near future. We have about $8 million in projects underway for, um, water and sewer, um, and those are in the design phase, and, uh, we have scheduled for, um, GMC to be here to present those designs, uh, at our work session. That was close one. And, uh, one, one thing I'd like to add, even though it's out of order from my development committee, we hear a lot of, uh, feedback from the public and otherwise about the amount of growth that we have here. Kind of like to draw at least a little bit of attention that we've been under, um, or tolerance for the, for the last three years, uh, of building and, and, uh, very little new development coming on, so. But, uh, from the enterprise perspective, still nothing on the minds, um, and we're hoping to hear something said, so that's all. Yeah, that's what I have to say.
Just a little evening?
Uh, again, uh, in your package, there's a, uh, what they call a client report for Infomark, folks that are handling the water plant now, water and sewer, uh, and, uh, some good information in there. You appear to be here.
Thank you sir. Parks and Parks? I'm not there for.
Tis the season, uh, seems like we've got a lot of events coming up, um, and I'll just jump down in order, of course, our downtown live, not that it's part of our parks, but it is in the downtown area. I just wanted to invite everyone to come out, um, and five, ten for that. And then the following week, we have art walk, and then we have a ribbon cutting at Jasper City Park to really showcase the new playground that we have there, and then also a lot of the hard work that Josh and team have put in, uh, around the pond, so excited to showcase that and love to have everyone.
I just want to re-exercise, I'd like to invite everybody out to ribbon cutting, um, see the hard work that our Jasper crews have put in, um, just, I think the whole, the whole's looking a lot nicer, a lot cleaner, and still got a long way to go, but we're working hard to get it done, so, uh, our, our crews are awesome, and our staff has definitely been supportive, so hopefully we'll see our parks start to shine.
Perro is also moving along, I'm sure we've got a bunch of updates. We're 99.5%?
Seven.
Yep.
So we're moving forward that as well, and, uh, looking, looking forward to, uh, sending stuff out to bids in the upcoming future.
Thank you. Public safety?
Public safety, we did have a work session this month and had, uh, a good discussion, a vote achieved, so we have some opportunities to really help out our police and fire, and, uh, that will be coming to full council on the beach here in the near future.
Thank you sir. City manager comments?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I know it, uh, may not seem like it's been that long, but it has been since we've met, uh, and since that time, we have, uh, celebrated the park's opening, uh, that occurred, obviously, the Wednesday after our, uh, Monday meeting in April. Uh, we've had the Chick-fil-A groundbreaking, uh, there's been a lot of activity on site with the longboard, uh, site development, Chipotle, Chicken Salad, Chicks, force coming along with tropical smoothie. Um, council members have kind of articulated some other, uh, good things, uh, going on, and, uh, just to kind of, uh, put before you, Ms. Kim has placed kind of this, uh, visual for, you know, a lot of times when you take a, a two-dimensional plan, like a road park, and you try to sit there and you say, hey, this is what it's gonna look like, it's hard to get excited, so we've kind of put before you kind of the, a more 3D-ish type of, um, aerial of, of what's the, the plan at nearly 100%. Uh, part of what the direction staff has been given was to try to deliver this to you all for July 7th, uh, consideration of bids, uh, so then that way, there could be an August groundbreaking. Uh, so in the spirit of going through this last year, we kind of set out ambitiously to provide the engineer with kind of moving forward, with taking these elements, uh, from the concept, uh, putting them into construction drawings. Along the way, Kim has kind of been, um, pushing them to, to stay on track, and as, uh, council member Hannah alluded to, uh, we are at a point that, uh, it would be ready for bid, uh, mid-May. So the idea would be that, uh, the drawings that you all have been, um, I guess, able to review are ready to go. I would ask that this would be the time that if any individual council member would like to provide us with further direction, uh, beyond that, what we received, uh, we would have to accept that. Part of what staff's position is, is we really want to just honor the commitment of getting this to you all for consideration, um, and so even though if you bid it mid-May, uh, the earliest it would most likely be on your agenda would be July 7th, so any, any pushback, then you would be an August, um, bid with a September groundbreaking, and again, this is gonna sound, what it's gonna sound, but staff's indifferent, we're just trying to deliver that with what you wanted us to do.
May I go ahead and share that?
Yeah.
So I did print out the views for each of you to have, because we have been having some issues in making sure that, uh, the individual screens that are at your areas, uh, will actually show. So I don't know if you're like me, it's very hard for me to visualize anything, um, until it's actually right there in front of me, so, you know, it was hard for me to look down at a flat set of plans and see what the park could look like. And so GMC has provided a couple of renderings this evening. This one is from the corner of Spring and Main, kind of looking out over the entire park. It's, um, you know, obviously, we don't have great big buildings like that that are around it. It's, it is just a rendering to show you what this could look like, or what we are on track for this to look like. And it's also to try and give a better representation of the significant drop-off. So it is much higher at this corner than down at the actual stage, um, it does start to drop off dramatically. I don't know, let's see here, yeah, you can see that. So restroom facility here, building down here is, is actually designed to be a changing area restroom for whomever might be performing that sort of thing, um, let's see here, and then, um, the rendering of the stage and lots of people having fun. So I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Douglas is correct, we are very, 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 very close. GMC right now is going back through the bid documents to make sure that we are complying with all of the federal things that we must, because this has federal grant money attached to it, so, um, all of those different pieces that we have to follow, um, to make sure, you, they're just making sure that the bid documents reflect all of those individual requirements before we are going to go out.
And, and I know it's been a while since we had the work session, the 27th of March, we had kind of touched on this a little bit, but just as a reminder, the way that we've kind of guided GMC in terms of developing the bid documents, I don't think Mr. Tony Davis is here, but, but he had challenged, uh, kind of me when I met with him, uh, a few months back in terms of some, some questions about what's the best path forward for bathrooms? Is it prefab, is it stick build? And so part of what I think staff wanted to do was provide you all with options, so we've asked the, the engineer to do some, uh, bid alternatives, uh, so then that way, whenever a person comes in or an entity comes in to, to bid, there's gonna be several different bid alternatives that you can look at to say that, hey, the overall bid came in at X, but then you have to evaluate each of the bid alternatives, and if the overall price for the project is attractive, but yet individual components are such that maybe one's more expensive than the other, you have to weigh those options to say, well, their overall bid is much greater, um, so what we're trying to do is provide you options so that when you do have this, um, you know, you can look and say that the, the grant money and adherence to the federal requirements, and then the SLOSS monies, we'll try to be good stewards of it.
Kim, this is a punch cutter, I can.
I'm with you. It's just, it is easier to see.
It is a lot easier to kind of tell from what, so, what I, whether or not.
That's awesome.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah.
Thank you for the bid alternates, uh, stick build versus modular, um, that's gonna be a huge component. Counsel, you'll have the options of bids come in to make the best decision on behalf of the city. I appreciate that opportunity, and not overlooking something like that, that is huge for us. Anything else from staff on this item? Any other comments? City council comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're discussing for other comments?
Yes.
Well, I do.
All right, then let's stay right there with the city manager's office. Go ahead, let's go on.
My bad.
No, you're good.
And it is unfortunate that Mr. Davis did leave because over the weekend, as some of you know, there was a question that was posed on social media. That's a good question, and I think that if one person has that question, kind of the old adage, there's a lot of people that have that question. And so even though we talk about these things in front of council throughout the various months as projects come up and as we get approval for different things, it is easy to kind of, if you're not keeping up with it, then it's easy to not really understand why this has maybe arrived at some of the decisions that they have. The question was, is it true that over 40% of the city's water is lost due to constant leaks, hydrant flushing, et cetera, and would this be in direct connection with increased water rates? So the reason why I think this is such a great question is because it doesn't necessarily have an easy answer. There are a lot of pieces to that. I could say yes, because that's true, but it's not the total reason. So regarding our water audits, the Georgia Water Stewardship Act requires that any utility that is serving a population of at least 3,300 people must conduct an annual water system audit. This audit has to be prepared by a qualified water loss auditor, and one of the engineering firms that we work with does have a qualified water loss auditor on staff. They do help us annually pull together all of the information, they put it together, and they submit it on our behalf. And the importance of having someone who is qualified to do that is because everyone is being evaluated on the same criteria, and you want to make sure that everyone is being evaluated on the same criteria. What the audit looks at are water sales, leaks, main breaks, hydrant usage, and that could be from flushing purposes because we've had a main break and we're trying to get it back online. That can be for actual firefighting purposes, that can be for testing of newly constructed planes when they are trying to flush, chlorinate, press test, all of those sorts of things. There's also increased regulation, water standards, and then water tampering and theft. Those are all things that we have to look at when we are pulling together the information for our water audit. Regarding the water rate increase, as you all know, the city engaged Goodwin Mills and Kaywood GMC to evaluate the condition of our utility systems, perform those hydraulic analysis on both the water distribution and our wastewater collection systems, and to work together with the city on developing a capital improvement plan or a CIP. And that was to address all of the problems that have been identified, as well as identify projects for the future to help with growth, to help put us in the right direction. Other than the project to expand our wastewater treatment plant, which is being funded by USDA Rural Development through grant and loan funding, the city has not ever gone through this process before. And so good information, I don't think it's any surprise to anybody, the information that we've gotten. GMC's work, which includes significant utility staff input, including evaluation of previous year's water audits, and so there's that component again, taking the water audits in, has resulted in a multimillion-dollar CIP program to address aging infrastructure. I know we have had some new projects that have come on board, but when you look at the majority of our system being at least 40 years old, maybe 50 years old, even older in some areas, and those get 24/7/365 usage, that is a lot of wear on infrastructure. Pipes are not self-healing, so they do age and they do start to fail. So, undersized systems that result in low pressure issues, and we have wastewater collection systems that take on a significant amount of inflow and infiltration. These CIP projects are critical projects that must be done now, and these are projects that are simply to help us better serve our existing customers. None of the projects that we are embarking on right now are truly for the future, there are future growth components to those projects, but it is really to just fix and make sure we have reliable service for our customers today. Some of these projects are critical projects, as I mentioned, and so in late 2023, the city started working with the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, or JIFA, to provide funding for seven projects that we identified that could not wait. We had to go ahead and do those things. Three of those projects are drinking water projects, four of them are what they call clean water, which is weird because that's wastewater, which is not clean water, but it's designed to get to clean water. And as we've worked through those application processes, the city originally asked for $24 million in funding, total funding. Their analysis of our ability to repay those loans, though, resulted in our loan request being to $8 million. So when you have seven projects totaling 24, and you have to now cut it down to eight, that means that there are some projects that we have put to the side until we can figure out another way to pay for those. In the coming months, I believe at the work session in May, GMC will be here to talk about the rehab to our sewer system project. They will touch on the sewer, the master lift station project as well, and then Ken Lee Horn is coming at the June 2nd meeting to discuss the water treatment plant, because those projects are the furthest along, and they will be ready to go out to bid very, very soon. They're putting the final touches on it, and it's important for everyone to know what these projects are designed to achieve. Let's see here. Because JIFA's analysis of our financials had centered on the USDA loan, which is the wastewater treatment plant, they were concerned about our ability to take on additional debt service, and that was the reason why they cut that down to a maximum of $8 million. The city had already been advised by USDA very early on in the process that we were going to have to do a rate study to justify and make sure that we were able to handle that debt service, which has to be paid completely for on the wastewater side of things because it is a wastewater project. And so concurrently with the utility master plan project, GMC started working on our rate study project. And the new rate structure that was implemented effective August the 1st of last year accounts for the debt service that the city has on our utility or our enterprise fund side of the budget house. It is designed to help us pay that debt service for both the wastewater treatment plant, for these JIFA projects that we have embarked upon, and it also is the start of being able to fund our CIP program, which is multiple years, and as I mentioned, multiple millions of dollars worth of work. While $8 million in funding from JIFA is helpful and will definitely make an impact, it is just the beginning, and we have a long way to go. So going back to the original question, the rate increase implemented August the 1st is a direct result of GMC's master utility planning process, which identified multimillion-dollar and multiple-year capital improvement projects, and this is essential to properly maintain and operate our systems. The water audits and the information that is considered, that is contained within these water audits is all a part of the information that GMC used to build that CIP and really to assess the condition of our system. The city's ability to fund the projects in the CIP is dependent on our ability to secure loan funding or grant funding, and keep in mind, grant funding is not always completely grant. There is very often a matching component that the city would have to come up with to put some skin in the game, and that can be 10%, that can be 20%, depending on the funding mechanism, it can be 50/50. And when you're talking about a project that may be $5 or $10 million, that is a sizable amount of grant funding or match that you must come up with. So, the amount of money that the city can secure is completely dependent upon our ability to repay or to provide that match. So again, back to the original question, it is yes. Our loss is definitely a part of this, and the rate increase is partially because of that. It's also because we have all of these infrastructure issues that we must take care of. We are responsible for. So, I appreciate you letting me cover that. I'm going to send this to Tony as well.
Thank you. That is a thorough explanation of something that was brought to our attention via social media. I do have a couple of questions that
Yes.
are redundant, but I want to ask, when you came on board, Ms. Goldner, or anyone here on this dais, did we have a 100% infrastructure evaluation? Did we know the stance and the state of all our infrastructure?
No, sir.
When we all came on board, did anyone here have a capital improvement plan prepared and readily available for us to review?
Yes.
There was not one. Did we have any funding to fix any of the problems that we encountered on day one at any of us on this dais?
So I would say no.
Thank you. It is very obvious to those of us that are in this consistently, those of us that are up here, we understand the severity of this, we appreciate the professional staff and your day-in and day-out interactions with the public. There may be some frustration because of lack of understanding, and our promise is that we will work with the public to help educate, to make sure people are on the same page, to know that we are putting millions and millions of dollars into our infrastructure to fix it for the future, to fix it for our current customers. As Kim mentioned, what we're doing today is not all about the future, it is to secure what we currently need to serve, what was inherited by those sitting here. We have experienced and implemented oratorics, we are currently under a temporary suspension, we have expanded and extended the suspension, we have a utility master plan on the way, we have our enterprise and our general funds separated, and one of the biggest things we've done as a collective body is we have engaged our state and our federal partners to navigate the waters, or the lack thereof, the water, that we need assistance. And so our federal partners and state partners are with us, we are attempting to do the best we can with what we are given, we ask for a lot of patience and a lot of grace. When you encounter our professional staff, I personally, as your mayor, as I look at this camera, will ask everyone to extend grace and patience to this professional staff who is working on your behalf, under our direction, to provide for you now and you in the future. Ms. Goldner, anything else on this item?
Not on this item. I would like to end on a happy note.
Yes, ma'am.
What's good? Thank you. Okay, so once again, we get to celebrate our employees who are celebrating workemurseries. So we have six in the month of May right now. I think you'll recognize that dashing fellow there on the top right corner, Justin Chastain with our public works department, he has been with us now four years, Nicholas DeSantis, who's with our fire department, two years, Mr. Douglas.
One year.
Celebrating one year.
One year.
Plus some extra from his first round. However, I would like to note that I still have three days on him.
Yes, ma'am.
We have Emily Grant in our planning department is celebrating a year with us, Keith Watson, 10 years with the police department, and then James Weaver, 12 years soon with our fire department, and so we thank all of them.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other further from the city manager's office comments?
Thank you for all the hard work with water, maybe, I know that's an ongoing. We do have some of labor, as always, as you said, and we ask that y'all be kind to this occasion.
Thank you. City council comments? Board of directors? Counselor Leo?
Sorry.
You're good. Any other comments, counsel?
I'd like to commend us council and our employees, our citizens as well, in being able to begin a process that involve planning, and now we need to be celebrating because we're delivering on those plans, and we have a holistic approach to improving our city that doesn't just focus, can't just focus on infrastructure or parks or one particular thing. By definition, we have to serve the city and all the capacities that we've committed to serve them, and I'm really excited about where we are and some of the decisions we make every month, and we're moving this maybe a little bit, but we're moving this city forward, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so.
Counselor, any other comments?
Here, I'm looking at the mayor comments. As always, the public is invited to attend our meetings, they're advertised accordingly, they are open. We'd love to have you with us. I would like to welcome in an official meeting is Carly Glaze, our community engagement manager, who is with us. We are excited to have her on board. She will be out and about in the community engaging with other folks, just as her title suggests. Counsel, we do have one vacancy that has become recent on the Downtown Development Authority. I will be advising staff to go ahead and advertise for input and applications on the Downtown Development Authority, and at that, I have no further comments. We will go into executive session, and I think we have a motion to go into executive session.
The meeting has started about 6:00, and they end with a adjournment, so if you leave early, you might miss it all.
That's right. Have a motion to enter executive session. Do you have a say?
Say it.
Motion to say, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close that. We are in executive session.